Audio is on.
It's all this meeting in order at 7:05 PM.
But it will just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read our edits from our last meeting? Any edits or changes to those? No. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was on May 21st.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So moving on to the acknowledgement of visitors.
Well, Madam Chair, if you'd like, I could let you know who's on live here. We have Ms. Nancy Cagiano. We have Ms. Britt Rusin. And we have Scott, which I would guess is Mr. Scott Bullock.
Man of the hour.
Man of the hour.
Hello.
As well as Mr. Rob Lebo. In person.
Thank you. That said, we have any correspondence or community input? Anyone out in the community that would like to say a few words?
Madam Chair, I do not see anybody in the chat.
Well, with that said, you can just. The superintendent's report. I want to do the bills first. Oh, the bills, sorry.
I don't know. How could you forget the bills?
Because I've been looking at numbers for days on end.
Just when I say that, I've been doing. Madam Chair, with your support and permission, I'd like to ask the member of the school committee, when I've done my report, to make a motion to approve $50,490.75 for this month's bill roll. It is extremely typical. The only little unusual thing is there are two months of the Healy Bus Bills. It just happened to work out that way. They were a little late with one of their monthly bills. That's the bill for the sixth and 12th graders to go to Swan Scott Little School and High School. Okay? Special education, Tannen copier. And Amazon stop and shop for food, and that's about it. Oh, I'm on there. I didn't even know I was. That's a reimbursement for something I bought for the school. Appreciate my credit card.
Love it.
And we don't have one. So sometimes, Kevin's had his use, I've had mine use. It's a, it's no big deal. The good news is when you pay using the school's account, you don't get burned for the tax.
Yeah, it's true. It's very true.
So Madam Chair, that amount is $50,490.75.
And I have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll for the amount of $50,490. With 75 cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And now we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on the superintendent's report, although makes no sense whatsoever, is what's on the report. Here we go.
Here we go.
Well, Rick to me, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Parentos. I'm happy to provide my report. You have item 6A in your packet. Under the area of student families, community, lots of items to talk about tonight. We have the transition to kindergarten. This is an annual event that we have on just throughout the last day of school preschoolers. And we invite the Public Schools Coordinated Family Community Engagement Group to the school to meet with our kindergarteners and talk about what kindergarten might be like and share a story. So that'll be coming up soon on our, and we invite actually the entire community, not just our preschoolers. That's open to anybody in Nahat. You know, come out and hear about that and also hear about what CFCE provides. I know that many Nahaters get over there and play groups with CFCE and it's a great organization to know about. We had Northeastern come out with their marine science programming. And I provided a picture for you. They are comparing the size of Beretta to a piece of kelp. And they had wonderful exhibits today, I mean, last week, just right in this room here on topics and all students, grades 3K through 5, were able to participate. And so it was wonderful programming and we're glad to still be a partner with them and integrate their work into what we all do. We're continuing our search for an aftercare program at the Johnson School. As I mentioned in our last meeting, Island Roots is closing. That company is going to be no more after the school year. And so we had a tour with the YMCA, very successful. We connected them with some employees of Island Roots. And so we're hoping it's going to be a smooth transition. I was very impressed with the regional manager from YMCA, Pevydy. She coordinates all of the YMCA's after-school programs. And so they have a dedicated person just for that. And, and very professional, and I'd be happy to work with them. For kids only, I reached out to them, spoke with them. They typically look for a group of about 50 for a minimum. They're in Billerica, Riveer, a lot of other towns around Pevydy. I worked with them as a teacher in Pevydy. As has our counselor. And, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see them come out and make a bid for the opportunity. But I'm not sure that they're going to. And if not, I think the YMCA would be a good fit.
Mr. Andrews, would the YMCA develop a program onsite or would we engage in busing the kids?
I don't think we'd do a game of busing.
Okay.
I can't, I don't, I don't see that as. Yes, yeah, that was, that's what, they were really happy to see the opportunities we have on the grounds. The way we've run it in the past, the number of students that we've had makes it a full site. We have 30 students enrolled in the after-school program, which is enough to have a site coordinator onsite with a couple of assistants. And so, right now, what we're thinking is that we would just have a different group organizing this, the registration, the billing and those things. But we would actually probably have the same staffing, which I've been happy to work with this year.
Same amount? Not the same people, same amount?
Same people.
The same people?
Yeah, you know, same people. They were interested in having a, make it as smooth as possible.
Okay.
Um, you know, work with people that are here right now.
Great.
And really just helping with the administrative piece.
So Ms. Colleen?
Yep.
That's great.
Yep, that's why I connected them with. Yeah.
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 Would the cost be concerted, what it was, or?
I shared with them what Island Roots is currently charging. And, you know, they're looking at that and, you know, they're considering that. At our town meeting, our CPA funding projects were approved. Really great to see. The rock scramble and signage for the forest playground was approved. And also Flash Road Playground Design Study. And so looking at how we can make a path from the Heritage Trail over to the school. This is a design study on the whole area. So Tony Barletto really wanted to consider everything in that area before we moved forward with the project. And so there's funding for designing where that path would be, how the signage would go, and where the other playfield would be around that area. Because it's an old ball field, there's an old soccer field, something's moving around. And so those were approved and I'm glad that we paid community support for those.
Madam Chair, if I may, connected to that is the possibility, and I emphasize the word possibility, of a larger town planning group, including a traffic plan study for the, obviously, the entire town, but focus may be on some of the areas that the CPA funding is adjacent to. One of the things that I've been promoting since I got here was the elimination of the back driveway to go around the building, because if you think about it, people come in and instead of going right through, they go all the way around the building at Flash Road. And as we have developed the back of the building as more kid-friendly, more activity-centered, the community garden has grown. You know, the garden is actually growing closer to the asphalt. And it would seem that it would be possible to have an in, an out, and the same thing on the Flash Road side, without having to go all the way around the building. And that would give the more of a typical school plan. Because it's not typical, even in an urban environment, it's not typical to have asphalt surfaces on all sides of school. You know, elementary schools, very, it's really impossible. You know, usually there's at least one long side of the school that is free of traffic. And we've been taking steps to make sure we have cones out there. When the kids are crossing, we make sure the cones go across the driveway. And we have, we have been incident-free, but that still doesn't mean it's a bad idea. Thank you.
And today's a good example. You see lots of cars parked in all different areas to watch the baseball game. So I'm thinking that that's probably something. In the area of technology, I'm happy to share that we had some Wi-Fi improvements this year as all of our kindergarteners were on devices at the same time. We don't use them a lot, but when we do, it seems to be at the same time. And so Ms. Fodaro's classroom has a Wi-Fi connection point. Ms. Morton's did not, and Ms. Morton's students kept on kicking off Ms. Fodaro's students. And so we found that that was a problem, not intentionally. And so we had self come out and they added three Wi-Fi spots for us. One's right over here, in fact, in this room, to help the signal connection in here. And then, then we've added one to Ms. Morton's room and then added one to a hallway. And so we're keeping an eye on that as we go to, we've been one-to-one for quite a while now. But it's just been some areas where we realized that everybody gets online at the same time on Wi-Fi. It's a bit of an issue. And so this has helped that and it's made things a lot smoother. So that's a nice project that's gotten underway. And they came out on Thursday and took care of it. In the area of curriculum instruction, I want to remind you that our kindergarten screening will not be taking place the first two days of school. We've moved that to now. When we have 17 students in kindergarten in the preschool, well, not in kindergarten, I'm sorry. 17 students in the preschool that are going into kindergarten. Rather than having the parents try to find a time in the fall that your other students are in school to do the screening, we're having them screened while they're here. So we have primarily the 4th and the 5th of June for that. Ms. Morton would also like to do some meeting with the 17, with those 17 students as well. And so that's happening coming up. So we'll screen all of our kindergarten rising students and then preschool students as requested. So if there's preschool students in the community, there's kindergarten students in the community that are interested in being screened, it's part of the trial-finding process, where we try to identify students who might be eligible for an IP or might have a delay that we want to address early or just curiosity to know about where kindergartners are going to be coming in. So that's coming up in June and we're scheduling it right now, the help of Connie Sperdakis, our special ed secretary. Grades 1 and 2 had a great field trip to Will-Follow. I heard they got the howl like wolves. They really enjoyed it. They, it was a really positive experience. And Ms. Antora and Ms. Antrim tied it into a habitats unit, adaptations unit. And just a nice ride up to Ipswich to see a place where they rescue animals that are in need of help. And so that was very successful and thank the PTO for supporting it as they do all of our field trips. I was able to take part in the health program Always Changing. I've been the instructor for the boys in the upper grades for that program as we move towards puberty in the springtime and changes. And that was successful. I gave a nice opportunity for students to ask questions in an environment I think that they felt comfortable in. And the girls met with Ms. Alissio for that program simultaneously. And I think it was a good program, well-received. The girls always have, seems to have more questions in a longer, more serious time, while the boys seem to have a shorter period where they ask more silly questions. But I'm not sure if that's the case, but that's been my experience at any rate.
I love him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it, happy to be the person that shares with that. I have a background teaching anatomy, biology and elementary science. So I'm comfortable in that role and, and with the kids that we have. And then finally, and most importantly, I think I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bullock and the VAN program for a wonderful job at Memorial Day Parade. We had several students who jumped in and helped out with the color guard, including fifth graders, first and second graders and third graders as well. They helped keep us in line. And then I was most impressed by the way that the fourth and fifth graders really held themselves at the cemetery. They recited the Gays' Birdie Dress as a choral group. And then they stood at attention for probably a good 15 minutes while we went through several other procedures. Throughout the entire parade, there were no behavior questions that I would be concerned about. And I couldn't be happier with their participation. I want to say thank you to them because it was, it's a long parade and they did a great job. And I think their town should be proud of them and their music teachers who brought them together.
Can I say, I just a word about that? I just, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Bullock too, and you, Mr. Andrews. Like you nurture the heck out of these really meaningful and important pieces of, you know, it was history, it was respect. It was such a great academic venture to memorize. The Gays' Birdie Dress and we're about it in that way. I know that this is an option of where Nahat used to do the sixth grade, you know, having one student in the sixth grade. I gotta say, as an educator, I feel like more students that were out of it, the way that you have done it this year with the fourth and fifth grade, the fact that, and I think their comportment and seriousness that matched the seriousness of the dress was one of the best examples of the way school comes together that I've ever seen. So like, that's something to really consider, I think, as educators. That these kids got this much out of it that they were willing to give that attention in an environment where they could have probably gotten away with more with a lot of understanding for the reasons that you said. It wasn't easy to stand through all of it and they did it. And they did such a beautiful job. It was really moving. One of my favorite things ever, I would say. Um, in the time that I've done there. And it is hard to reach the level of popularity that Mr. Bullock has reached. Everyone is appreciative of what he has brought to our program. So I, we were talking about it on the stream. It, I just hats off. It brings, if, I actually said if my daughter had had that and had missed the bullet, she probably would have learned the guitar faster and the saxophone better. Say me playing the piano.
Yes.
So I, it really, it was great.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you for everything.
Oh, it was my pleasure. It was a wonderful experience.
Yeah.
Enjoyed it.
I was really impressed to see that the whole group, they recited it together, they were composed, they were front and center. They were, they represented us very well. It was truly moving. Yeah, and Mr. Bullock seeing us, us cheer on the kids got hit even more excitedly. So it was sort of like everybody was feeding off of each other and it was a great day.
It was great. And it's as fun as he is, everybody kept listening. So when he was like banned or he has a particular like banned, you know, they were all, you know, even the mid like snacks, Oreos.
Yeah.
It were all like.
His energy is just contagious.
Yeah.
So I think they all really enjoyed, you know, me. So it was awesome. Thanks to everybody for putting that together. It's a lot of work.
We're happy to be part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down below, I have some dates for you. As I mentioned, kindergarten screening, we have a spring concert coming up. So that'll be fantastic, I'm sure, Friday, June 7th. That'll be at 1:15, followed by Field Day and Olaxia School with an early release at 11:30. No lunch served.
Wow, I cannot believe it. I'm sorry, the no lunch served is when?
Oh, that's on June 14th. Olaxia School.
Okay, sorry.
Small detail. Take out your kids at 11:30.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what we mean by no lunch. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Facilities update shall be brief, but important. I will do the budget update next, but the budget update leads me to tell you that we will be putting the two coats of silicone on the gym roof, which is the last thing I wanted to do. We will have the funding and I will explain that later. The $50,000 earmark is almost all spent. We have ordered new flip charts, but they haven't come in yet.
They're, they've been shipped?
They have been shipped. Wonderful. And with a payment for those, which is approximately $2,300, we'll have some odds on, and then money today, I ordered some more magnet strips for the emergency door locks. So the doors are always locked in case of emergency. All the staff member has to do is pull the strip off and the door is locked. You know, you have to look for keys, you don't have to waste any time in an emergency. And as you know, I have to be in contact with John Tobin, the vice president of Northeastern University about our donation. And as I explained to you in writing, he has supported it with the administration of Northeastern University, but he is unsure what will happen this year. So as soon as I know, you'll know. And hopefully we will continue to get our $25,000 donation for the arts that we are humboring so well. If I want to remind you, not only do we have great musicians, but our, our artists won the NPY art contest for the poster and we had two of the three runners-up. So that was 275 entries. So good things are happening here in addition to the academia, the academics. We had a Verizon issue today, which got solved. We had a Verizon issue today which got solved. Um it was a mess initially. Turned out to be not so such a mess, but the communication between uh our alarm company and Verizon and the business office and the service office. And by the time I had it all sorted out, we found out that uh we never lost our fire alarm. One of the two lines was down and it was a Verizon issue which hadn't been repaired. Uh but it was repaired in such a way that we may have to have the alarm company back because every time the Verizon line blinks, the alarm needs to be reset. Um some, no, sometimes. So, but that's neither here nor there, but everything, everything with facility is really, really good. I'm really proud of it. Okay, budget. In front of you, you have a budget that is current as of the twenty-third of uh May. Uh I did send you an email and explain to you why you don't get some things with the original packet. Because we try to make them as current as possible in this time of year. It's really important to be current. So this shows you that uh of the entire budget, which is four point five five two million dollars, we have approximately six point two percent left. That's not accurate. And let me explain why. That percentage takes into account the huge payment we make to Swanscott this year, even larger than typical, because we had the sixth grade twenty one thousand dollars. Which is by the way, why on the last page, that budget line item is in arrears. Because by the time the school committee decided to send the sixth graders, the budget results already have completed. So that's the amount of money we sent for the sixth grade this year, which is one point two eight percent of the whole. So if you take the one point eight million dollars off the four point five, the real expenditure budget of the school district is about two point six eight million dollars. Which means the two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that's left is really about ten point five percent. Let's see that. It's not the whole picture. Uh we have about a hundred thousand dollars in grants that we have not shifted over to pay for things that have been taken out of the general fund. We also I'm pleased to say on May twentieth, we did receive the one hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for extraordinary relief, special education. And we have fifty-five thousand dollars in circuit breaker this year, which is reimbursement for the money we spent last year for high-cost students. So you take the hundred thousand, two fifty-four and the fifty-five, you have about three hundred thousand dollars. Add that to the two eighty-two. So the real unspent money is in the neighborhood of five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, give or take ten thousand. So I will be uh bringing to you either next meeting or the week after that, or approval to sign a contract for the twenty-five thousand dollars for the gym roof. We will have another. And we will have a much more typical uh end of the school year. Now, the numbers I just gave you don't include two things. They don't include sixty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, which is called reserve relief. And they don't, it does not include thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollar, which is called circuit breaker reserve relief. That ninety-nine thousand dollars doesn't have to be spent this year. So the hundred thousand dollars to the one fifty-four in extraordinary relief and the fifty-five thousand circuit breaker are going to be spent first. Then if we need to balance any other line items, I will use the ninety-nine. And Mr. Levo is sitting next to us, hoping that I don't spend any of that because he could use it next year. So in circuit breaker, you can use it for two years and only two years. And and then it gets returned to the town as free cash. Which is obviously not what we want to do if we want to spend it for education of special education kids, because that's the intention. So globally, that's the budget. Uh if you take that home and you start looking at it, you go, my God, we're in deficit here, we're in deficit there, we're in deficit here. Remember, that's before Chris and I transfer from the hundred thousand dollar grant, the hundred fifty-four thousand dollar extraordinary relief and the fifty-five thousand dollar circuit breaker. So there's two things that'll happen. One is a, a journal entry. And the other one is a line item transfer. And later in the meeting, I'm going to ask the chair to entertain the possibility of me being able to make those line item transfers without waiting for your school committee meeting. So that the town finance director can do them in smaller pieces rather than having to do them a, a large number of them. Because tonight's transfer is just the beginning of the transfers. And to remind you, they can be done this meeting, the two meetings in June and your first meeting in July. And after that, the budget's frozen. So we want to make sure we get it right. We spend all of the money in the appropriate ways. Uh we return to the town free cash, whatever we have. But we want to make sure we have, we set up next year uh in a, a way that there's no hardship for the, the school district next year budgetarily. Okay? And of course, any questions? And if you want to take those home and look at them and see something that bothers you, please uh email me. And Madam Chair, this budget update, the happiest one we've had for a while.
I'm happy to be.
Extremely well. Uh for the umpteenth time in a row, our budget was supported by the um unanimously by the Vincum. And there were no questions from the floor about our budget whatsoever. And uh the omnibus bill passed under forty-four to fourteen or something. So uh the budget of the town also is in very, very good shape. And uh the sale of the old housing will even provide more revenues. Don't know when, if that's going to be fiscal twenty-five or twenty-six. And then I was surprised by a member of the committee and by a member of the finance committee at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you all. You probably all know, know about it before I did. Thank you for their kind words.
It's nothing compared to what we've done for us, so just a small token.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you notice, I said nothing. The last thing someone needed was more words at town meeting.
Sorry.
But I certainly um was totally unnecessary, but greatly appreciated. Thank you. And Madam Chair, old business. Okay, in your packets of label seven A, you have the eloquent statement penned by the school committee chair for the uh introduction to policy meeting. Yeah, I, I put it in here just in case, Madam Chair, you didn't want to get something from your colleagues. So you know, whatever you want to do, uh we're probably not going to be ready to put that into final version until uh July. Um there's a lot of financial stuff to do. And uh Chris does the editing of the policies with Connie and they're both very, very busy. But you know, we have it very well organized and this was the last piece, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
I've already given the town meeting report. Uh so I'll skip that. Uh the school committee meeting dates, I amended the draft that was before you, before. And uh that's just for your interpretation and uh if you, if you want that electronically, I can send it to you electronically if you prefer it that way.
That would be great. I know. That's how I know. And it'll be okay, it's okay, it's two days, so, okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, through you, the after-school program, I believe you had an update from the uh principal about that. And I have nothing else to add. Uh the um item seven E is the parking lot use. Uh I want to thank you for making a recommendation that we get the town attorney involved. Interestingly, I had already contacted him, but didn't get anything back until the day after the meeting. Uh this is a release waiver of liability and indemnification agreement signed by myself and Joe Mochia Advanced Building Concepts, which takes into consideration all of the needed protections for both the town and the school committee. And Madam Chair, go right to new business. With your permission, I will defer to the principal for the Johnson Elementary School School Improvement Plan two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Oh, Madam Chair, thank you. It's my pleasure to share this uh improvement plan with you. We had several members on our council this year that met throughout the year. They were Madeline Fadaro, our kindergarten and, and rising kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, Jennifer McCarthy, a parent, and also Nancy Antrim, who served uh several years as senior representative. We narrowed our goals and really tried to focus the plan into what we really want to see for action for the coming school year. In previous years, we kept on things that we do every year, but we really thought it would be more beneficial to have something that was really focused on what we wanted to work on. Uh and a lot of this is driven from the staff through input to our curriculum committee and our PD committees. Uh goal one is to pilot, evaluate and select an elementary writing curriculum for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have uh, to remind you, literacy is broken down in my line at least into forming letters, recognizing letters, reading words, writing words, and then writing sentences and ideas. And so literacy has a lot more to it than just one program. We have a great reading program at our school in Fundus Penel. Um and teachers have said, geez, we'd really like to have something that is a stronger writing program. We currently use Collins Writing as a way to help students understand where the correction areas are, what they should work on. We have some great professional development around that. Um but we're also interested in looking at what writing curricula are out there because currently teachers are developing their own writing curricula around topics that they see they need to um work on. And so we'd like to look at what writing curricula are available and then uh move forward with a recommendation to you. Goal one. Uh and goal two, you've heard some about this this year. Uh and this is about implementing the DIBELS reading assessment. This is coming down from the state, but also recognizing that we really need to have a uh a research-based reading assessment that complies with the new state standards and requirements. Uh we're currently using Fundus Penel's reading assessment and we have used DIBELS in the past. We had a DIBELS training this past Friday. And uh the bolded statements here are the most recent updates to this. Throughout the year, we meet and revise our school improvement plan. And these are the most recent updates. Um so our main goal for this goal, this area, is to just have our students raise their reading levels and use DIBELS as a new assessment to measure their improvement. And it's great because it's a, it's an online tool, teach user one-to-one. So it'll be a teacher with a computer, a student with a piece of paper. Uh it was featured in the item this uh past weekend. We had an article about it. And it fully complies with the state mandate on reading assessment. Goal three is to raise the average MCAS score by three percentage points uh by May of twenty twenty-five. And we have a number of ways to do this. We are looking at using IXL, uh developing or implementing uh skill plans, diagnostics, and also one idea that I thought was really special was having a, more of a school-wide celebration of math achievement. Uh so recognizing players of the day who did a lot, a lot of skills on, in the previous evening or classes that achieved a high level of uh skill attainment in IXL on math. Um this came out of one of the parents that was on the board. And I thought it was a great idea, similar to how we celebrate students walking to school with the golden shoe trophy, celebrate their math achievement as a class. Um and so we're really looking to increase our math uh skills in twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I apologize to you because I saw this several weeks ago, I saw it again last week, and I forgot to talk to you about it.
What's that?
What does three percentage points mean? Uh I, the way I read it is if our average, I think our average was around five oh five later.
Exactly.
And so that would mean about fifteen points. So three percent not three points.
Oh yes, right, right. Good point. None of the gross, none of the, like the, the, the net score.
Scores would go up approximately three. We're targeting a minimum of three percent growth, which we'd be, would be about fifteen.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And it was my confusion and I, I.
No, it's great. It's a great question because the uh, the way the MCAS comes out, they give you this, this range.
That's right.
And uh we really want to, you know, translate it to what you're talking about there.
So we, I mean, we may want to be clearer.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, you were talking about approximately fifteen points on the MCAS scores.
I wonder how many people are looking that closely at those MCAS scores, but I think that's a great question.
That's up to you and the, and the S I, the committee, but uh and when I, when I looked at that, I said, I know what he means.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Sure thing.
Uh and goal four, we, I want to say goal four and goal five are both about teachers. I feel the teachers that we have have excellent skill set. And I really want to push them to be that best every time teacher. And so what we're looking at is developing engagement strategies um in, in differentiation, which are the two most challenging things I think to focus on as a teacher in ELA and math. Uh this is a small line here, but it really talks about using manipulatives, using application. Uh and where this comes into play is when I'm doing a classroom observation, I'm really going to be focusing on um making sure that the teacher during math is doing whole group discussion, pulling them aside if you don't understand it, letting fifteen go ahead, asking three to come aside if they want extra help and anyone else who wants to join them. Um using the unit cubes that we have to min, to count, as counters and not just using paper and pencil on their paper as counters or using their fingers as counters. But we have these materials and sometimes we don't get reminded to implement them or we're afraid the students are going to play with them and not use them as they should. But I'm, I'm really promoting that, you know, let's hit, let's make sure we're using every single tool now that we have, you know. Our teachers are excellent in classroom management, routine, knowing the category. Let's take it to the next level in terms of manipulatives and differentiation.
Ms. Andrews, do you use a mon, a walk-in tool? Like, do teachers see the tool that you use when you walk in classes so that they know what you're looking for? These are being these, these rules.
Absolutely. Um it's, it's informal. Usually I'll ask them afterward. Geez, I think you could have gotten higher engagement by using whiteboards and markers.
Right.
Um and have it, instead of picking on one student, have everybody give the answer at the same time. Um and so um I don't actually have a checklist that you, that as you describe, but I, I think that could be a great way to do it. You know, did I see manipulatives, whiteboards? You know, did I see manipulatives, whiteboards, high engagement?
Paying attention to the separation of church and state and that we share a profession.
You do.
I'll just say, I think I've had some luck when teachers know, like, sort of the cadence of what you're looking for, the know in advance.
Yeah.
Like, I'm going to be looking for evidence of academic talk for the next month, right? And they see, like, the calendar, okay, we're going to work on this from, like, September and October, and then we're going to do X Y Z from November or December, you know? If that makes, and sometimes that level of specificity doesn't make sense, and you want to be reactive to whatever's going on. But if, if there's a way of letting them know beforehand, sometimes that has helped in other areas.
That's, that's a great point. It sounds, it sounds like it's more fair. Like, you know, you're not trying to catch anybody not doing the right thing. You're trying to say, I want to see this.
Right.
Can you show me?
It also means, like, if I'm a teacher and I know you're going to be looking for engagement that way, right, with the whiteboard.
Yeah.
Then I'm going to be saying, I'm going to make sure, it might already be limited, but I might make sure it is. And then if there's, you might get a deeper level of feedback. Because you're not going to be, I will, I'll have this going on, but there might be something else that I'm learning as a, as a teacher that you might be able to see, and then my learning goes deeper, right? Not just here, because I already know you're going to be looking for that. So just a thought.
That's very helpful.
That's your, that's.
No, no, very helpful.
That's your decision, but I know that. Just wondered when you were talking about that.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I support that with the following guideline. We have worked hard since last March when we had a survey to engage all of the teachers. This would be perfect for the curriculum committee to expand the curriculum committee from, quote, curriculum, you know, what? What's being, to strategy and design. So to maybe even retitle that committee, a curriculum strategy and design committee. Get the staff input first and therefore get their buy-in rather than, you know, it comes from your desk, my desk, Mr. Lebo's desk. I think that's a good strategy, and then to make it clear that it's a universal expectation that we're working on this. Like.
Great. Thank you for the input. Uh, goal five is related to the previous goal. Implement strategies that increase student engagement and deeper understanding of concepts. This is more through project-based learning, multiple, multiple discipline of study, and then sharing these projects at something like our portfolio night event. And so this also speaks to the increasing engagement of students. And that's my school improvement plan.
And Madam Chair, unlike in years past, for about the last five years, the school committee did not vote on the school improvement plan. Way back when it had its origins, it was approved by the school committee. Now, I think it's for the last, about the last five, six years, maybe even longer. The school committee accepts the school, the school improvement plan. So I respectfully suggest that a member of the committee make a motion to accept the plan.
Yeah, I can make a motion to accept the school curriculum thing.
Improvement.
Improvement, improvement plan for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Second, I'll.
Thank you. Madam Chair, eight B is the N S E B C Board of Directors. Every member district has a representative on the Board of Directors of the North Shore Education Consortium. The Nahat Public Schools is blessed to have its superintendent for next year being a past chair of that illustrious board. So when I, when I contacted Tran, she was thrilled at, at Mr. Lebo's return. So I respectfully ask a member of the committee to make a motion to us to approve of Mr. Lebo as the member, the Nahat rep on the Board of Directors for the N S E B C.
I'll make a motion to recommend that Mr. Robert Lebo, our incoming superintendent, is our representative on the N S E B C.
I second.
Thank you. And eight C is really a two, two vote. It is the first group of transfers, line item transfers, so that all of those minus signs of that budget that you saw on May twenty-third will disappear. And then when we finish the budget year, every line item will either be zeroed out. In other words, the expenditures will match the budget, or the expenditures will be lower than the budget, which means that that would be money that we would be returning to the town for free cash. So why don't we do that first, Madam Chair? Our history is I read them because this is a bunch of numbers. And you have to approve them line by line as compared to the bottom line. So the first one is to transfer from the auditing line, and I'm not reading all those numbers.
Yeah, great.
To the dues memberships line item, and the amount to be transferred is four thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars.
So can I make a motion?
Motion, second vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve moving money from auditing to dues membership for the amount of four thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Do you want me to just run through it?
Sure.
I'd like to. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to move the allotted money from school committee supplies to legal for the amount of four thousand one hundred and four dollars.
Second.
I do. Oh, that's the motion.
Oh, that's the motion.
Now, the second.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. I'd like to make a motion to transfer money from the custodial supplies to custodial salaries in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor? I'd like to make a motion to move money from textbooks, regular education to teaching supplies in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second.
All. I, I'd like to make a motion to transfer money from textbooks, special education to teaching supplies for the amount of a thousand dollars sixty-six.
Second.
All. I, I'd like to make a motion to transfer money from technology services to teaching supplies in the amount of thousand, five thousand dollars forty-eight.
Second.
I, I'd like to make a motion to transfer money from special education and contracting services to O T salary in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second.
I, and I'd like to make a motion to transfer money from regular educational aid salaries to special education aid salaries in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
For saving my voice. And Madam Chair, my last item would be to ask you to extend me the opportunity to make line item transfers like we just saw under the authority branded by the school committee so that I can do them in small bunches with Chris, day after day, and present them to Allison so she can put them into the budget system so that in the ne, in the next month and a half, she doesn't get three big giant loads of transfers. And just like I do it, just like the superintendent does in the authority you grant for the summer, at the end of the period, you will be presented with a document that details every transfer that the superintendent would make. That would not be expending money that we don't have. It would not be expending money in any other way than moving it from line X to line A. So that the bottom line of the budget has no impact, is not impacted whatsoever.
I don't need to assess the.
Motion to allow the superintendent to make line item transfers until the next.
Until presented.
Until presented at a subsequent school committee meeting for approval.
Perfect.
Second, second. All in favor? Uh, we're always. Transfer to Rob, the superintendent, the office, not the person. No, that was just until June, right?
This is just.
Debate.
Yeah, you may want to add fiscal twenty-four to the motion to make that clear.
For fiscal year twenty-four, I think.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And then obviously, if you so chose next spring to extend it to the superintendent, you can.
Okay.
My guess is there wouldn't be so many as next year because, if you remember, we had extraordinary expenses. We were waiting for the state money, so we were spending money from accounts we didn't have. You know, we didn't have any money left. That's typically, I mean, usually there would be fifteen to twenty of these. This year, there's probably going to be fifty. And because we, and we may even be moving money twice because we may be moving money to, to zero out a line item, and then a bill comes in. And we're now not zeroed out, we're in deficit again, so we got to do it, you know, it's, it's pretty complicated this year. But we do have.
That's great. So is there any other committee difference? I have some. Um, I, it has been over a year since we had the survey, I was thinking about this and you reminded me. Well, your fault. I do think it's an exceptionally good practice, but I was hoping to do a survey. I think that, I think that even more so when we have a new superintendent. Does it give the two of you a good, clear, um, yeah, like dipsticking of what's on the teacher's, what the staff's. So if there's a way that we can do that before the end of the school year, I don't know what there is, but that would probably be helpful for our new superintendent. And I think you should do it. Well, I do know that our new superintendent would like to put out a survey. Right? Okay.
Can I ask another lady a question?
Yes.
I don't want to touch you. Um, so we're fully staffed for the fall with the classes and the teachers and all that great stuff, okay? And fourth grade is going to have two teachers, and fifth grade is going to have one that's new, correct?
Fifth grade will have a new teacher.
And Miss Rosine is teaching sixth.
Miss Rosine is teaching fourth.
Oh?
Yes.
Oh, right. Okay. Miss Rosine is teaching fourth with another teacher. That's.
With a new teacher. That's a dear.
Teacher. Got it. Okay. Got it. And who is going to be teaching sixth?
Um, Whit, Whitney?
Yeah.
Uh, I forget her last name right now.
A new hire.
With an H.
Harrington.
Harrington. Thank you. Yes.
Isn't that the new teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
A new teacher who has a.
Very, very experienced, most experienced hire.
Yeah, five or six years' experience. She lives in the hot.
Great.
And she'll be doing sixth.
Great.
Lydia Smith is going to teach fifth.
Okay.
And she is going to be coming to us with degrees in reading, special education. And she's doing her, her program right now in I F switch. So she did student teaching, and she's doing a full year in the switch as a reading specialist.
Oh, okay.
Impressive hearing is the other hire.
Yep. Coming out of B C.
Coming out of B C, and she's been.
Fourth grade.
And she's been working, she's had faculty, she has student teaching, and she's been working with other.
Student teachers. Yeah, student teachers, really.
Your goal.
Helping place student teachers, I would be seeing in student teaching positions. And each fourth grade class will have twenty-six fourth graders next year. So if we split it even, thirteen, thirteen, there's no reason to have to do that. We could have, you know, ten and sixteen. But either way, classes would be small.
Yeah.
And really nicely staffed.
Great.
Would you like me to send you the resumes again that were in the packet last time?
Uh, if you don't mind, that would be great. Okay. I mean, what was this, Janice supposed to mean?
Tessa.
Tessa.
T E S S A.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Can I go back to the survey for a second? Would this be, uh, because when we did the survey last year, it was a survey. Would this be a survey in addition to, or would this be a superintendent survey? Like, what, what kind of surveys? So this would be, I should have put it around the bottom of the table. So, I, I don't want to speak. Like, this is a survey that Rob wants to do, but not on behalf of the school.
Right, right.
So, right, that's the topic.
Yeah.
They want to do a survey. They should do that survey. Yeah, I think it is, I think it is important for the school committee to do the survey. I think that was well. It seemed to go well last time. There was a lot of, you had distributed together, you got feedback from teachers. They seemed to like that they were asked with the back. We identified some areas. The school was already working on a lot of the areas that came up, which was a great thing. And I think, you know, it's, it's a creative process. We sent that back out. It was very transparent. And it allowed, I think it, it allowed at a time when we, when teachers were expressing in other ways that they wanted to have a, a voice in some other, in some different ways. They were able to express that, and I think that in and of itself, no matter what's said or done, is a good thing, right? So I think the fact that it was really allowed for that process to happen. So my question is, perhaps there will be some new teachers. That's, that's a great. Yes, so.
Yep.
I would say. So maybe we skipped it this year, but we'll do it again around the same time. March. That was my question. We said last March. Yeah, which is, okay. You know, informally, one of the hardest points in time in the first year, so you really. True. You know, it's not like September or June, right? Right. Um, but I, which I.
You're still on vacation.
Um, so, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Great. Yeah. And it'll also be far enough away from the survey that Rob wants to put out.
That would not, like, bombarding people's surveys.
Well, we can't do two surveys.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
Right.
So we have, sorry, can we just remove the dates really quick? So we have two meetings in June, right? June eleventh, which is field day. Am I correct? Yes.
Yes.
Great, sure.
June eleventh?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And then the twenty-fifth. Yes. And then that is Tony's last meeting with us as superintendent, and then the next meeting on July ninth, we will have Rob as our, is that correct? Okay.
Yep.
Oh, no, okay.
What is the meeting?
You have a smile from ear to ear. You're ready. You're like, get me out of here.
You, you misinterpret my happiness and thrill with being here with you.
No, my son said to me yesterday, Mom, didn't you tell him you were joking up down enjoying that I am?
Well, when you get to be as experienced as I am, numbers get big. Like, my wedding anniversary. Big number.
Calm down. So do we have anything else?
Should I make a motion to adjourn just?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow.
Looking at her.
Rob, let's see, right, let's see, right, Mariana, that was for the, like, the luck.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight, May twenty-eight, twenty-four, at eight oh eight P M. Yeah, eight oh eight P M.
Thank you, everyone, that we took you there.
I said, we're meeting in the library, which is my portion to two audiences.
Oh, sorry, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, sorry, Rob, you said.
I was sorry.
Administrator evaluates aided book system. We took each. One at a time for an hour executive session.
Who does that?
It's been, this can't go any longer.
But not that late, midnight, not midnight.
No, no.
Keep it short.
I'm supposed to be away till nine.
That's a tough one, high school principal.